Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. All right.
Perfect.
Well, I want to thank Dean and Marguerite for inviting us all out here and I want to thank each one of you for coming out this evening. You could have been anywhere else in the city doing things, watching some of the football playoff games or other things. So we appreciate you coming out here and giving each one of us the opportunity to introduce ourselves so you can put a name with a face, give us a chance to meet with you afterwards. I look forward to meeting each one of you and talking about the issues that we face here in Ward 5. As, I don't have to tell anyone here, Ward 5 or South Oklahoma City has been forgotten by City Council for too long. If you look at, you know, when we voted for MAPS, you know, most of you are old enough to remember the oil bust that occurred back in 84 and how for about 10 years Oklahoma City and Oklahoma as a whole, we were, it was pretty desolate. It was a depressed economy, high unemployment, a lot of people moved out of Oklahoma, some of them have moved back, but most of them have set their roots up in other locations. I was here during that time and when MAPS first came out, it was something new that nobody had really talked about or done before. We voted for that and then the rest was history. We started, we improved downtown, Bricktown, cleaned it up, people started coming in, conferences started coming in, companies, individuals, and then you see what 20 years of growth in that area have done for downtown Oklahoma City. Now that we've gotten to this point, it seems like our tax dollars are still focused on Bricktown, downtown and the Midtown area. You know, I challenge anyone here to go out and drive in our district and count how many bike lanes there are or bike paths that are off the main roads. Parks, additions to that, disability things. Audra's son has some physical challenges and she's been a huge advocate for her son at the state level, at the national level and here locally to try to make sure there's accommodations for those individuals who may have physical disabilities and want to be able to use the resources here in the community. That can be sent out to the parks as well. So my number one reason for getting into this race was because I want, I don't feel that we've been effectively appreciated, if you will, our tax base. We have a large tax base here in this part of the city and it's time for, it's our turn, it's our time. It's time for us to have a voice at City Council that focuses on financial resources and community resources to lift up Ward 5. And with that, there's a lot of things that I have in mind. You know, first and foremost is safety and security. We cannot have a good community without good law and order and that goes from top all the way down to bottom. And when I say top to bottom, top obviously being our police and fire, our MSA personnel, but from the bottom up, that also means in the school systems, in the community, teaching family values and morals to the children so that when they get to be adults, they're not challenging the legal system. I think we just, we just, the city just passed the agreement with the FOP to give a raise to the police officers. I think that's a wonderful thing. I think there's more than we can do to help them with their training facility so they have the best resources and we can make sure that Oklahoma City stays the best trained police department in the United States. My son is a six-year veteran of the police department, so I'm very pro police and I definitely back the blue. And, but as far as, you know, the homeless problem is a big issue. I think that there are a lot of opportunities. It's a complex issue, it's going to be a complex solutions to do that, but I think working with everyone at the City Council, we can, and working with the private sector, we can definitely do a lot to help curb that. And, you know, I'm, I believe each one of us, like I said earlier, we're citizens, we're neighbors, but we're also family. And when it comes to family, family takes care of family first. So if we have homeless people coming in from other states, that's great that they want to live in Oklahoma City, but I don't think it's our responsibility to take care of them financially. Okay, okay, thank you. Infrastructure's big. I think we need to revitalize the business districts of Southwest 59th Street, I-240 and also 89th Street. If you, I-44 is growing constantly. We need to make sure there's bridges over there, working with the Department of Transportation. The I-44 Southwest 104th Street intersection right nearby Verizon is a nightmare and that needs to be redone. Someone's going to die there and we don't need to wait until that happens. As far as community enhancement, I think we need to go into the parks and retrofit all the surfaces and equipment for the kids, do in South Oklahoma City like we've done elsewhere in the city. And then as far as city leadership, I think we need to have a very conservative approach to that. There's some people that are wanting to spend excess money, seven minutes, wow, that went fast. Okay, so if you go to my website and get my paperwork, I look forward to meeting you afterwards and one thing you remember about me, I'm never at a loss for work. Thank you.
All right, that was great. Who was number two? Mr. Toon was two. Come on up. Oh, I forgot to say that this beautiful lady right here is going to be the monitor and stuff for the, with the yellow paper. She starts waving it like this. Time's up!
Well, I've got a five and I've got a seven.
Ah, there you go, five and seven.
Five and seven, so I got it.
Perfect.
Great. Hello all, thank you so much for giving up your Sunday to allow all of us to be here today. I really appreciate everyone, all of our candidates for being here and allowing us to speak. My name is Toon. I pronounce it or I, I've been nicknamed Toon since my, since fifth grade, kindergarten. Toon Win and I'm running for City Council, Ward 5. So my story is that I'm an immigrant. My mom and I escaped communist Vietnam when I was four years old. We came, we left Vietnam on blind faith with nothing. We didn't know if we were going to live or die. So this journey that we took, my mom took us on was a leap of faith of God, love and perseverance. We risked everything on this journey, but by the grace of God and with the help of my uncle, who was a Vietnamese Colonel serving in the air force, Vietnamese, Saas Vietnamese Army, Air Force at the time, and the help of Middlewood Baptist Church, we were able to come here. So we arrived in the United States at Will Rogers Airport on May, on January 2nd of 1981. We only had the clothes on our back and a suitcase. So as a family, we actually struggled the very moment we got to the United States. My mom had worked three jobs to support us. She worked three jobs, saved every single penny, nickel and dime to actually reunite my family. I met my, we were reunited with my family when I was 16. So I didn't leave, I didn't meet my brother, my sister and my dad until I was 16. At 18, we bought our very first home in Moore. May 3rd, 1999, we've lost our home. My dad and I was in the tornado. After that, we built our dream home in South Oklahoma City. So in 2000, we've lived in South Oklahoma City and have been a resident ever since. A year after that, my dad had passed away of lung cancer. So in his passing and before his passing, he told me the story is that this is a place that connected us. This is what brought us together. So it still resonates with me today and that's one of the, part of the reasons why it's still upon me to run for City Council. I mean, through it all, we've had challenges in our life, but we battled, we fought and I graduated with a bachelor's in biochemistry, later on went on to get a master's and then I ventured off. I started my own business, the insurance business. So I own an independent insurance agency focused on insurance products for a lot of our community. And so in doing so, that led me to be this product of the American dream. And so this product of the American dream that I so proudly face is like, this is a place I call home. This is, I've known no other place in the world that's better than the United States. And so that causes me why I want to run for City Council because I want to give back to our community. I want to give back to our city, our state and our country what it has given me, the opportunity to live out this American dream. So my qualifications is that I've served on a lot of different commissions. I've served as your urban design commissioner to protect commercial districts, have experience in revitalizing commercial districts. I work and serve on the MAPS 4 Subcommittee on Connectivity. So our Subcommittee oversees like the MAPS 4 project with sidewalks, bus, transit, bicycle lanes and sidewalks and so, and beautification. So those are the key things that we focus on. So on City Council, these are the things that I want to take care of. Infrastructure. I had the opportunity to meet with Councilman Stone Cypher and you look at this, developments, Okana, Hamlin, while all these new developments and growth, all of them are not part of Ward 5. We need development in Ward 5. We need a lot of our tax incentive going back and investments going back to Ward 5, which is what Jeff said. Number one. Number two, we really need to do that, not only bicycle, not only like as a top 20 city in the United States, we actually need infrastructure. We need infrastructure for our roads, our streets, our sidewalks and in serving, I do know that there's a lack, we lack Ward 5 out of all the bus stops, all the bus shelters that we will have, 250 and we are only getting five to seven of them in Ward 5. So I can't change that unless, on the city level, you know, when I, when I, when I ask some of the people, why are we not getting more? It's because we need to talk to our city council, council people and council people vote on that. Number three is public safety, you know? As a growing city and a big city, a top 20 city in the United States, all large cities have public transportation. So we need to expand bus routes. A lot of our board, bus routes go to 89th and some goes to 119th. We need to extend those bus routes because access to food security, a lot of our citizens need to access grocery stores, especially we're hoping the homeless with a children, homeless with a more foundation, they're building a teenagers homeless shelter for people, tiny homes, community. These kids don't have access to transportation. We need to provide those for the kids. And number five is knowing that our police and fire has an increased budget, we need to focus on recruitment and retention. In the next three to five years, we're going to be losing about 15 to 20% of our police force. So we need to put our efforts towards recruitment and retention. So I am different in that I would love to bring Oklahoma City, connect our Southside Ward with our Oklahoma City Ward and bring better resources, but not only that, we need better communication, we need better feedback from our ward. We, our city staffers and our, everyone at the city level, how it impacts difference is we need to engage, we need to have town halls to where our residents get to participate and we get to listen. And that's only going to be done that way. So thank you so much for your time. Vote Toon Win, Ward 5. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That was fantastic. All right. Three, Audra?
I am a fifth generation South Oklahoma City resident. My great-great-grandmother, my great-grandmother live side by side on Southwest 25th and Agnew and we live in, our home was built by my grandparents. My mother was raised there. I've been married to Ty for 23 years and we have three boys, all of which attend John Rex Charter Elementary School, which was a MAPS for Kids project. And my son, our son, our oldest son was the first class to go to pre-K there. And whenever I was pregnant with Max, our youngest child, and we knew he was going to be born with severe developmental disabilities, it was about, when he was about one years old, I realized that, when he'd started that school and pre-K, that there would be a barrier to his access in every single building that my other two kids would go to. So the downtown, the Newark Downtown Library, which is another MAPS project that we funded, Civic Center Music Hall, the myriad gardens, all of these buildings downtown Oklahoma City my youngest son at the time did not have access to. Anyway, I'll get, I'll go to that in a little bit, but we are members of Southern Hills United Methodist Church on South Penn and we attended Oklahoma City Community College where I graduated, Phi Theta Kappa, which is honors in political science. I then went on to the University of Central Oklahoma where I received a bachelor's in political science. I was headed to law school until I decided I just want to be a paralegal and that's served me well for the last 20 years as I helped people with estate planning and corporate I was appointed by Governor Mary Fallon to the internet, to the interagency coordinating council, which is where the Department of Health and the Department of Education come together for the benefit of children birth to three years old, born in the state with developmental delay disabilities. I served that council for four years and I'm also the chair of the Family Advisory Council at the Children's Hospital at OU Health where I get to see the inner workings of a major medical system. And the hospital was the first state-owned building in the, in the state to install a height adjustable adult-sized changing table. I'd like to ask you all a question in this room. If my son Max were here and I needed to help him with his toileting needs, where would I change his diaper in this building? Do you have a baby changing station? It probably only holds 50 pounds. So someone in this church would be directing me to the floor. So I took that problem to my state representative and this year is the fourth year, it'll be introduced into the legislature. It's called Max's Law. Anyway, that work is what led me to the Oklahoma City Building Code Commission where I asked for an amendment to how Oklahoma City defines a family restroom for our city. I've gone building by building over the last five years. Will Rogers World Airport was the 17th building in the nation, or airport in the nation to install one. Before that, they directed me to put my son on the floor in the bathroom. First day Oklahoma City Convention Center was open, Mayor Holt said, hey y'all come down and come tour this building. And I called and we had leadership in that building direct me to the floor with my son. There was a barrier in that building first day. So anyway, I got unanimous support from the Building Code Commission that we change the way, whenever we erect a building or if we go in and renovate a new one, that if it requires an adult-sized changing table, that those buildings would provide for people with severe and profound disabilities. As far as what I'm going to focus on in the city, of course, I will be the only known disability rights advocate around that council and it's needed because people with disabilities make up the largest minority group in our state and they are the most underrepresented people in our communities. Of course, I'm going to focus on our current infrastructure and removing barriers. In fact, removing barriers in all corners of our city is a main priority for me. I see barriers that prevent us from helping our house, unhoused population. I've asked our state legislators that if our citizens 65 years and older can have their state ID and identification card feed waived, that why can't we do the same for unhoused? So who in here is 65 or older? Okay? You do not have to pay to have your ID or driver's license renewed and I do not believe that our unhoused population should either. Thank you. Of course sidewalks, accessibility, transit, all of these things, I think that we might agree that everything that's important to you is important to me. We need to expand our transit. As far as for our police, whenever I've mentioned my, my service to all these boards that I've served on, the number one topic of conversation that we spent months on was called trauma-informed response training. And I've asked several of our Oklahoma City police officers if they know what trauma-informed response training is and they do not know what that is. And I believe they should. It is why we have a Title II investigation against Oklahoma, State of Oklahoma, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma County. We had a complaint filed with the United States Department of Justice regarding Title II violations. And I believe if our city officials are aware of the federal rights of our disabled population, including those with mental health and intellectual disabilities, we're not going to be having the problems we have with our police. It gives them tools on how to appropriately interact with people and I've already started that process. Are you familiar with Representative Forrest Bennett? He's in Oklahoma City. I've reached out to him and I've asked him for help. He's, he's a big supporter of solving this problem. It's a nationwide problem. You know, I could go on and on and on. I know I probably got like 30 seconds left. But I wanted, I would, I would like to just have a moment. I'd like to invite you all, if you'll take a pen if you have it. On the 26th, we're having a bus rapid transit meeting at 327 Southwest 27th Street at 4:30 and you can voice your concerns about the lack of transportation we have in Ward 5 and also MAPS 4. We have a planning, we have a planning meeting at 5 o'clock at South Lakes Regional Park Event Center. There are parks in Ward 5 that will be discussed at that meeting and then on the 9th, MAPS 4 at Sellers Recreation over there between Penn and May, that one will be at 5 o'clock and I would encourage you all to attend those meetings.
All right. Thank you so much. And that brings up Matt. Last but not least, come on down. I greatly appreciate you.
Unorganized notes. Like everybody else, thank you all for being here tonight. If anybody's streaming the Cowboys game, keep it to yourself because I'm recording it and when I get home, I'll watch it then. In the immortal words of the Rolling Stones, please allow me to introduce myself. My name's Matt Hinkle. I'm 60 years old. I've lived in Oklahoma City for 36 years, but worked for Tyler Media for the last 43. I live at 119th between Penn and May and have for a while. I have an unusual story and so bear with me and humor me. I want you guys to look at this in a different way. Imagine Oklahoma City as a giant company and you guys are the board of directors and the four of us are applying for the job of manager. So I'm sure everybody here has the heart of Oklahoma City in their heart, but what it really boils down to is who's the most qualified to be, represent you. And so I'm going to explain why that should be me. When I was 18, right out of high school life, started to work for Tyler Media. It's a guy that swept the floor and cleaned up stuff. And 84, I got, I had a child, 86, I got divorced, moved to the city. Was either going to be a deadbeat or pay child support and live in my van. So for two years, I lived in my van with the support of South Oklahoma City. In 89, I bought my first house and everything from there has been a spiral upward. Due to hard work and due to introductions and due to the community that South Oklahoma City wraps around you. So once again, I worked for Tyler Media for 43 years and what a great family, but it allowed me to meet people like the Odoms and the Mashburns and Jim Bowers Sr., God rest his soul. I don't know if you guys know, he passed last week, but what a great Southside person he was. But in meeting those people, they gave me the opportunity to do work for them and they understood that I was a hard worker and introduced me to their friends and on up the way I went to where I got involved in the South Chamber and I got to know all the politicians in the South Side of the city who were all supporting me. And I got to know the business leaders in the South Side of Oklahoma City who were all supporting me. It's also where I got put on the Planning Commission and along the way, I've coached your kids in paddle basketball and I've been a mentor in schools and taught them how to read and, 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 and. I've been a community servant for a really long time. But the planning commissioner part of it has allowed me to see a lot of things in Oklahoma City that need improvement. We're doing a lot of things right, like the Oak, which is going to Northwest Expressway in Penn, which is $300 million of outside money coming in. It's not on the South Side, but high tide raises all ships. Okana, it's on the South Side of the river. It's not Ward 5, but that's $300 million worth of private investment coming to Oklahoma City and the tide's raising all ships. So what's going on in Oklahoma City isn't bad. What's going on in the South Side isn't all that great. So just as I hope you investigate me, I've investigated what Oklahoma City's done for us on the South Side and it's not good. In the capital improvement plan for the next five years, on street resurfacing, we get five out of 130 projects, which is .05% of the city budget over the next five years in the capital improvement plan. So I can't come to you and go, I'm going to fix your street because that's not how it works. But I can come to you and tell you that as a councilman, I'm going to make sure that Oklahoma City gets its fair share. And I've heard a lot about bike lanes and transit. Oklahoma City has bike lanes and Oklahoma City has transit and if you want more in Ward 5, sometime between now and now in May of 2023, you need to go to maps4parks.com and give your input because you can have a say-so in the park reconstruction in South Oklahoma City, which has $48 million headed toward it. So let's make sure we get that, but we don't get that unless you guys voice your opinion. This is bad. Streets in South Oklahoma City, Ward 5 gets $6.67 million over the next five years, but that's only .05% of the budget or five of 130 projects. It's horrible. It's horrible. The city's going to spend $7 million on bike lanes over the next five years. So Ward 5 gets a million dollars less than the rest of the city does for bike lanes. I like riding bikes, but not that much. Oklahoma City's a vehicular city. I want to apologize for my campaign manager because I think he works for the post office because I'm sure a lot of you have gotten enough mail to pay for a wall somewhere. But I've heard some feedback about why are you dragging city polit, or national politics into the council? I don't know whether you guys watch council meetings, but a month ago, three of our city councillors got up and walked out of the conversation on the police contract. They didn't vote, they chickened out. Leaders lead. You don't get up and walk away. If you don't like it, vote no. If you do like it, vote yes. But that's not how a city's supposed to run. So the Washington DC or the DC politics that was referenced there, we had a city councillor three years ago standing in front of a burning cop car going, nah, it's just a peaceful demonstration. One of our city councillors. So Ward 5 is very important to me to make sure that that doesn't happen. Once again, the other candidates, I'm not saying that's them at all. I'm just saying that Oklahoma City, it takes five votes to change and what happens on Tuesday can affect you on Thursday and it happens all the time. So we need to make sure that the five votes that represent us are what we want it to be. Thank you very much. And I got stuff back there and it's hinklefor5okc.com and my granddaughter's the one who set up the website, so thank you all.
All right. Thank you. All right. I think we want to have, probably the easiest way to do it is have everybody come up here and sit or stand, whichever you're more comfortable with. We've gotten several questions and thank you for all the questions because that is great and I'm very grateful for the turnout as well. But we're going to have to, I think I talked to you about a few minutes, four to five minutes for questions. Probably going to be about a minute per person on a question. So this lady again over here. So this lady again over here, she's a pretty tough lady over here. Whenever she raises her little yellow flag, we need to try and finish it up as quickly as possible. Or we're going to be here until about midnight. Does anybody want to stay here until midnight?
No.
Probably not. All right. Because I, I've got another meeting of this to go to in the morning. So that, uh, I'm going to see a bunch of these people tomorrow morning as well.
Bean, would you like to just pass this along?
Yes, we can actually, we could probably use both of these. Hello? Hello?
Hello.
Yeah, we'll probably have y'all pass this one down, y'all pass this one down. Be great. Uh, I'll stand over here out of the firing lane and ask questions. All right. Uh, first, and I think some of you have alluded to this a little bit. What are your priorities going into this position? And if you could only accomplish one, what would it be? So whoever wants to take that first. Got one minute.
Can we go in order? Should we go in order?
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and take it. Um, if I could only accomplish one thing with city council, that would be to have greater accountability and transparency on what goes on related to the issues with the agenda for the city. Um, I, I think it would be a great idea to have a city ethics commission so that we can make sure that there's no political overreach. And I think by doing that, that would establish a base of, of ethics and transparency and accountability for the voters and the citizens. And then from there, we could, we could look at other things, but that would be my number one priority.
So of all the priorities, I, I feel like tackling infrastructure is important to all of us. Um, infrastructure as far as roads, streets, sidewalks, um, it has to be in place for us to move further, uh, especially if we're growing in population, people coming to Oklahoma City. And we need, we need to build that infrastructure, especially with our, with, um, the multiple cars coming on. Um, I think of all the, uh, all the issues relating, it's, it's a tough one because there's so many priorities that I would like to take care of. Um, but I feel like infrastructure, proper infrastructure in place is the most key.
I agree with you. I would tackle, uh, I would choose to tackle our infrastructure, our current infrastructure and look at what we're doing and how can, how we can do it better. Um, like I mentioned, my children go to John Rex. You know, there's not one curb cut in that whole school for wheels and it's only a ten-year-old building. So, um, I'm hoping that with my, my vision for a truly accessible and inclusive city, that we look at our current infrastructure because I'm having to go in and ask the city council for curb cuts at a brand-new elementary school. Um, when we, when we, when we, when we lack sidewalks and, uh, so many more of our citizens are choosing, uh, to, to, uh, use bikes instead of, uh, all the vehicles on the road. I, I believe that we do need to invest a lot of our, um, energy and time looking at how we can build better and going in and renovating what we do have to make it, um, more accessible.
Donnie, Stephen. Um, I'm going to take that a step further. I think one of the smartest things we can do as a city is smart and sustainable economic growth. Because if you don't grow the economy, then you can't afford to fix the roads and you can't afford to grow the economy if you don't have good roads. So it's a vicious circle. But we need to make sure that we're not building homes in areas that we can't sustain and service. And we need to make sure that, we need to make sure that what we have built, we're taking care of. Because if we don't, I mean, deferred maintenance is horrible. If we don't take care of it now, it's a problem. But if we don't continue to grow, I mean, we've got six hundred and twenty-one square miles of city here that a lot of us just zone AA, waiting on development to come to it. But you got to have smart, smart growth. Um, and that's, as being part of the planning commission, that's some of the things I've got to see is how we're taking away, um, industrial areas and turning them into residences. And my minutes up, I'm going to stop there.
Thank you all, man. Y'all are doing great on this time thing. All right. Uh, please give your thoughts on the Human Rights Commission. Number one.
Can you clarify what aspect of that commission?
That, uh, well, the commission that, this is a question from somebody else. I am not familiar with this myself, but, uh, they have voted on a human rights type commission? And I'm not positive on that.
You want it reversed?
Yeah, go ahead.
This was something that the city council voted on six, eight months ago. It had a lot of controversy in either direction. At the end of the day, the way they voted was to have a human rights commission, but they put absolutely no teeth in it. They have a commission put together of a whole bunch of people who can re- make recommendations to a higher body that actually has the opportunity to do things. So my own personal opinion is if us as a council is going to make a resolution to do something, we need to put enough teeth in it that we have the ability to penalize somebody instead of just making a recommendation. If we're not doing that, then we're wasting our time and the citizens' time and staff time as well. And I'm not against the Human Rights Commission at all. I thought it was a good idea. What I'm saying is, is that along with, like with the mask mandate, they put this mask mandate in place, but there was no fine if you didn't wear a mask. And it was, it was a whole lot to do about nothing, just ceremoniously.
The Human Rights Commission gives citizens an opportunity to address a, a body aboard about issues that they feel is important to make change in our communities. Um, we were, I was part of the Norman Disability Rights Coalition. And we were playing in Ruby Grant Park and we came together like this one night. And out of that meeting, um, a whole lot of change came. And then most accessible and inclusive park is built in Norman. And it was because of a commission like that where we had an opportunity to go and be before a board. So it's very important in it. We used to have it a long time ago, but it went away and it was recently revived. So I'm a huge supporter of any kind of board that goes in and tries to make change for the betterment of our city.
So I, I served on the Human Rights Task Force. So Mayor Hope appointed me, uh, on that commission to re-activate, uh, the Human Rights Commission because, again, what Audra said was it was, um, disu- dissolved, um, earlier on. And the committee was formed in efforts to bring about, um, accountability. It, uh, brings about, um, efforts, uh, to ensure that, um, now, I'm not, uh, I'm not, uh, one, uh, to say that it's, it's, uh, that, that they're building teeth in, in that. Um, it's, uh, it's, uh, a way that all of our wards are represented. And so each ward, each coun- each, each councilman appoints, uh, a person or a two-person to serve on this council to bring about accountability. Um, but referring to what Jeff said earlier about ethics. Just stop there. But I will definitely reconsider if the time comes.
Okay. Well, full disclosure, I, I don't know all the intricacies of, this is the first I've heard about the Human Rights Commission. Um, I, I am a nurse practitioner, family nurse practitioner. I've been in healthcare for over thirty years or close to thirty years, excuse me. So I advocate for people that, that are not able to take care of themselves, uh, physically and mentally. Uh, and we address the whole person. So we, we work with social services to give them resources that they can use to help them le- live a better life. I think one of the most important things we should do is, uh, my, my catchphrase is I want, I want to make Oklahoma City the most family-friendly city in America. And looking at everything we do at the city council through that prism, we want to make sure that it's e- fair and equitable for everyone that comes forward. So if someone has a concern or a hurt or need or desire that they want to bring to the city council, I think that having the channels to be able to get that message to the decision-makers, I think is great. Um, as far as mask mandates, I'm highly opposed to that. And that may be surprising as a healthcare professional, but, um, I don't, I think that we are wise enough and educated enough to be able to make that decision for ourselves whether we want to wear a mask or open our business for service.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. That's great. Because yeah, that, that was a new one for me as well. But, uh, homeless presence has increased. What are some plans to protect private property and prevent public property encroachment?
Well, once again, looking at it through the prism of what's best for families in the community as a whole. Uh, the homeless population, um, you can, it doesn't matter where you go. Um, there's trash, um, with that can be diseases, needles, syringes. If, if people are camping out on small businesses in front of there in the parking lot, that's going to cause families to steer away from that business and go somewhere else where they feel, uh, a little more safe, uh, about themselves. Um, I think that we need to address the homeless, uh, population. There's no one answer for that. Some people choose to live on the street and there's nothing we can do about that. But what we can do are things like, um, not giving cash to panhandlers so that then their drug dealer can bring drugs and alcohol to them. First thing we need to do to fix the problem is we need to look at the whole person, the mental health issues, the substance abuse issues. And then the reason they're homeless is because they're not able to work. The reason they're not able to work is because of X, Y, and Z. So it's a whole, it's a very complex situation. There's not an easy answer for that.
I'd probably agree with all of you guys out here on homelessness. Uh, homelessness is a, 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 a multi-fold facet. And so we need to take care of it in a way of affordable housing and mental health and addiction substance abuse, uh, counseling. Um, a couple of months ago in city council, um, our homelessness task force, um, city planner, um, Lizzy Coats, uh, had, uh, presented a Better Way, uh, solution. And that Better Way is like a van that takes our homeless population off the streets, take them to where their services or social services that are needed. Um, however, that, uh, a Better Way system is only in place for one year. Uh, so there, there, the limitations on that is that there's only two vans going out two days a week with mental health professionals. We need to increase that amount of outreach, street outreach teams. Alongside, we need identified areas of our city that is affordable housing potentially. I'm really excited to see what our more, uh, more foundation school board is building, our tiny home community for our, our, our youth experiencing homelessness. And we can study from that model with bridges, uh, to see how we can study and, and effectively, effective on homelessness. So thank you.
Our unhoused population, um, demands the attention of our, of our city, but also our state and national government. Um, there's barriers, there's current barriers that, um, we need to be looking at. Like waiving the we, the fee for their, uh, driver's license and ID. Many times it gets stolen or lost and they have, they, some of them are on disability and they have bank accounts. They just can't get into the bank account without an ID. So if we can look at every barrier, if we look at the barriers that our, um, nonprofit organizations, you know, for these tiny houses, I mean, they have zoning fees with the city. So the city of Oklahoma City is charging nonprofit organizations willing to put forth the effort and funds and money to help alleviate, relieve this, um, the housing burden. We should also be working as a city to maybe relieve those fees associated with the rezoning and all the, every barrier that is keeping the unhoused population from having a home. Um, we, we need to be looking at the city with a, a bird's eye view of what, what else can we be doing? I believe that we need to take our maps, look at our maps projections and maybe boost that up to the top priority. Is it, Ward Five has a, a huge, okay. I keep stealing that from you.
Sorry, we don't have more than two microphones.
I can share.
I agree completely with everything that's been said. The tiny houses behind Skyview Elementary is a great project that's going to happen. That's, I'm so happy that's happening. Um, Chief Gorley and the Hot Team have had multiple conversations about homeless people. And I've said this enough, there's three different kinds of homeless people. You have the ones that just got booted out of their apartment and they have their kids and their dog and everything they have in the back of the station wagon. And they will take a hand up from anybody willing to give it to them. And for the most part, those services are available, not readily available, but available. And they're a lot privately funded. You have the chronically homeless who have an ID or not, have a bank account. They just can't afford to live. The cost of housing, affordable housing in Oklahoma is non-existent. And then you have the people that stand out in the middle of the street and yell at a bridge and try to steal your kid's bike and those people need to go to jail. We've replaced drunk and disorderly with mental illness to some degree. And according to Chief Gorley, a large part of those people are just running from a warrant from another county or another state. The homeless project is ea- is not easily fixed, but with a hundred million plus in MAPS dollars headed toward it, I think a lot of it can be readily alleviated if everybody pitches in. And a minute goes really fast.
To clarify, did you just say that you would like the homeless population to go to jail?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Can you re-clarify that for us?
I said that the third of the homeless population that is standing out in the middle of the street and yelling at a bridge or punches a lady in a gas station, that's a criminal act.
Okay. Well, you didn't say punch a lady.
Well, I mean,
He said steal a bicycle.
Steal a bicycle. I mean, there's, there's a criminal element to the homeless population that we all don't want to admit to, but I, I'm not trying to sugarcoat anything, but there's a whole lot of stuff that goes on, especially in downtown, that is just, if it were you and me doing it, we'd go to jail.
Well, and one thing to think about with that is, you know, with what everybody, everyone has said here, and I think this may be a good conversation to expand a little bit. But when you have the homeless population that are in and around downtown, where we have put so many hundreds of millions of dollars to boost up and build up downtown, for what? To allow homeless and, and people have talked to individuals where they show up in Oklahoma City and they were given, uh, fifty dollars and a bus ticket and they got here and it's a one-way. They don't know anybody. They don't, they don't even know where to go to ask for help. And currently what the city does, once a year, they go out and they spend one night and they, they tag, they don't tag, but they identify everyone that's here. And that gives us a count of how many people we have, how many homeless people we have in Oklahoma City. The problem is with the money that we're getting ready to spend in Maps Four for the homeless, we're going to re-spend all the money, but if you go and you read the agenda or read what's been the resolution on that, they're, they're taking bids about who's going to build what facility until like the year of twenty twenty-five, okay? The homeless that are on the street today will probably be dead by twenty twenty-five. The problem is today. And so we need to get them off of the streets, away from the businesses and the civic, uh, event centers and things like that. So families in Oklahoma City can enjoy Oklahoma City. There's enough land in our area that we can set up a, a mini-community and we could bus them into the city for services and then bus them back out in the evening time when families come and want to enjoy downtown. Because right now the revenue is going away because people are choosing to stay at home rather than going out and, and, and mingling with it.
So to, to add to that, um, so the Maps Four has fifty million dollars for homelessness. However, in our resolutions, we have not picked an operator for that. And we still need to, as a city council, we need to come together and we need to pick a, 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 a true operator. And what, uh, alluding to what Matt said is we are going to need a lot of private, public, city, not only city, but also county, help to take care of this issue. It is a multi-fold issue. It's not a simple issue to take care of. And so, um, it's going to take that amount of work together, uh, with everyone in collaboration. And so, uh, I, I believe that, that's what's going to need.
All right. I think, uh, that, that is a great needed topic of discussion. And this question will go right along with it. Uh, what are your thoughts? What are your thoughts on inclusionary zoning practices? Anybody want to take that first?
A better definition of inclusionary zoning practices from whoever asked the question, but.
Basically is affordable housing. That, that's what he was looking up for the definition as well.
You know, part of it would be having builders build different sizes of homes, that type of things, I believe, I don't know, I didn't ask the question, but.
In all the doors that I knock, one of the main questions that I get right off the bat is what are we going to do about the homeless people? And everybody's answer is the same, I want a humane way to get rid of them, but not in my backyard. And that's everybody. The cost of real estate in Oklahoma City and the cost of, of building things and funding things is so outrageous now that even affordable housing now isn't affordable. I mean, starter homes are like two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars where they used to be a hundred-and-twenty-five. So collectively as a city, we're going to have to figure out how to take infill properties and put the right amount of investment in it, and then how to run them to where they don't turn into a blight on the area they get stuck in. Like in Sixteenth and Rockwell is a perfect example of apartment complex after apartment complex that are sitting empty because the people have just walked away, which I don't want to live at Sixteenth and Rockwell, but that would be a great place to redevelop and start figuring out a way to house people. I went to Milwaukee with the Greater Chamber and they solved their homeless problem. But how they did it is they had real estate and they had landowners that were willing to take a haircut for a federal check, but they put people into homes and then sobered them up. And we don't. You've got to be sober to get into a home here. So there's a fix out there, it's just going to take a lot of work and a lot of, like Toon said, across the board, help with each other.
Okay, I got one definition real quick, if I can just jump in there. And that, that is right along that line. Inclusionary zoning, if everybody doesn't know, and housing policies require developers to reserve a portion of housing units for residents with low incomes, often with restrictions on resales that specify purchase by households with low or moderate incomes. Inclusionary zoning and housing policies may be based on mandatory requirements or development incentives, such as expedited permits, approvals, relaxed design standards, fee waivers or reductions, or density bonuses. Permits for larger buildings when affordable units are included onsite. That is basically the definition of what that is talking about. So basically, like he was saying, developers are going to be required to build smaller homes to include low-income families in that neighborhood as well. That, that's what they're looking at voting on.
Inclusionary zoning is a new term to me tonight, but I would be in support of that when we let, when our children go to John Rex Charter Elementary School, and it's the most diverse school in our city, because they're, we're among the homeless population and some of the wealthiest families in Oklahoma City in that school. And it's a beautiful mix of children coming together and learning about one another. I don't think it's a bad idea to have a, a neighborhood that has a certain percentage of smaller homes, that gives people an opportunity to learn about one another and also their children to grow up and learn about one another. So I would be in support of something like that.
So inclusionary zoning, I believe all of us though, that Ward Five has like one of the wealthiest income-earning processes. And so we've had houses, really good neighborhoods built. On, on the side of inclusionary zoning, we also need to think about protecting whatever our neighborhoods is, is, is already, and with codes that protect our neighborhoods, but also identify areas and help our developers identify areas of infill developments. I really agree with what Matt has said, infill development means that we can actually build more affordable homes that costs less, that incentivizes our developers to build in areas that includes income-earning, like low to moderate income-earning people that can include that. But on, on the side of the infill development, it also is a twofold, because if you look at infill development, it means like you have a retail on the bottom. So you can think about this, retail development in the bottom will bring sales tax revenues to our ward. Number one, number two, it also will develop an amount of space that is affordable for our citizens, for our residents. So that, and a twofold approach would actually bring in a resource for the city and Ward Five, so I would really support that.
Yeah, I, you know, one of the things, we're, we are highly blessed here in America. We're the richest country in the world, in the history of the world. You know, if you, if you go back and look, and a lot of us have grandparents that, or parents that grew up after World War II, look at the size of the houses then. There was not one unless you were wealthy, over a thousand square feet. Most of them were two-bed, one-bath, possibly detached garage. And that's what people lived in, they raised families and sometimes multiple generations with that. So I think that when we think about inclusion, we don't have to necessarily think, okay, well, we're going to build a thousand-square-foot house and it's going to be, you know, a hundred-and-fifty dollars a square foot. You know, someone who needs homes, that needs to afford a home, they don't care if they have a granite countertops. Formica would do just fine, keeping costs low. They don't have to have the, the latest and greatest remote control ceiling fan. A thirty-five-dollar one from Lowe's or Walmart will suffice. So I think there's a lot of things that we can do with the building, construction community to let them know, we want affordable homes that are safe and secure in good school districts. And this goes back to what my concept of the family-friendly approach to Oklahoma City, that this is good for families. They can fill a part of the community, they can grow with that community, and then as their income increases, then they can go up to the next level of home for themselves and their families.
Right, thank you so much. All right. What are your plans for bringing public transportation to this area? Oklahoma City has a bus system that only goes to a hundred-and-fourth and a hundred-and-thirty-fourth in that area. We pay taxes but have no access to public transportation.
That's a very simple solution. All we need to do is have the resolution and expand the bus routes.
So I want all of our citizens to know that serving, we are nearing completion of the Bus Rapid Transit for North Classen and up to Northwest Expressway. So that's going to be our very first Bus Rapid system in Oklahoma City. We're going to study the plans. We're going to also build two more rap, Bus Rapid Transit routes, one in northeast Oklahoma City, and what the exciting part is, we're going to build one for South Oklahoma City. So as our city council, either four of us, we are the decision-making process for those routes to be expanded and where it's going to go. So those are the decision-making process for Bus Rapid Transit. Serving, and serving in MAFS four subcommittee, currently, the master plan for bus routes, limitations on funding, and the cost of expanding routes is going to be costly. However, we can expand routes with looking at micro-transit sites.
The planning commission, I will be a, a strong advocate for our, our streets. I live right at Seventy-second, between Western and Penn, right by the Winchester Drive-In. And the amount of potholes along the Service Road of I-240, I have the, the lifetime or the lifetime on my car at Hiptons is constantly, probably every three months, getting my.
They make you not want to go down there and shop.
Right, right. And nowhere else in the city will we find such bad potholes. The long pothole, and it's like a very long trench on South Penn, under the bridge, under two-forty. I don't even understand how that has been there that long, because it, it pulls your tire every time you drive over it. So I will be a squeaky wheel about our squeaky wheels in Ward Five.
I agree with everybody. If you want to see what's going to happen, go to better streets, safer cities, and lines it out there of what's in line. The capital improvement plan that I spoke of earlier, we are woefully neglecting the amount of funding that South Oklahoma City gets compared to the other seven wards. The money's already allocated for things. Over the next four or five years, the only intersection reconstruction that's going to happen in South Oklahoma City is at a hundred-and-fourth and I-44, where the cluster of Walmart there is that whoever dreamed that up should be shot. But, but that's the problem, is that everybody here needs to be a squeaky wheel, and every time you hit a pothole, call the action line, because all those things get written down. At the end of the month, I go, well, look, there's eighty-seven people who called about the pothole at Ollie and Fifty-seventh. And that's how those things get fixed. The city councilman has avenues to do things, but fixing the street in front of your house is a pipe dream and not one of them. I mean, interior surface streets are the last on the list of things to do, sadly enough. So the squeaky, you guys get wheel-wise, the better off we're all going to be.
Well, and to tell in on that, I don't, I personally don't think that we should have to wait for funding to be available for it to get, for, to get down far enough on the list to say, okay, now we can start doing the interior streets. I mean, I agree with what everyone said here on the panel. But I think that because the taxpayers are the ones, you guys, we are all footing the bill for the city, there should be a high enough priority put on that. So instead of money being allocated for something that's not going to be spent for three or four more years, we need to work with the concrete and asphalt companies to maybe design something to, to where it'll last longer instead of just, well, it's going to fix it for a year, let's fix it for ten or twenty years. And we don't have to spend a million dollars per mile, we can just go in and fix what's there. But just to leave it until it gets, comes up on the list is unacceptable.
All right. It, we do need to just keep at one minute as much as possible, because we are getting pretty close to time up. And let's see what time I got. Okay, yeah, we've just got a few minutes left. This one kind of goes along with it, I don't, that, that's more of a personal neighborhood, I believe, on that one. And we do want to get to a couple of these others. We have some very liberal candidates in a couple of different wards. What will be done to protect Oklahoma City from becoming more liberal because of candidates that are in these wards? And I don't want to name the wards, but I think most people here would know, as far as, I think one person alluded to the council member that is going, "Oh, it's mostly peaceful with a burning police guard right behind them," a couple of years ago. What can we do to protect?
I'll start on this one. The council's made up of eight people and a mayor. Five votes, you can do whatever you want to do, you just need to be on the right side of the five votes. As I alluded to earlier, leaders lead, they don't get up and walk away from hard votes, they have the hard conversations, because that's what you got elected to do. Oklahoma City has good management, Oklahoma City has good fire, they have good police. I'm proud to say that I'm supported by the police and the fire in Oklahoma City. But in, in reality, we need eight people on the council that are a like-minded group of loosely knit organization of like-minded people. Sure can get a lot done if nobody cares who gets the credit. So every ward right now is having this exact same conversation that we're having tonight, the other three wards that are up for election right now, about what's this council going to look like two years from now, and how are we going to vote and what are we going to do?
We have extremes on both ends of the, of the spectrum on our city council, and a diverse population of viewpoints and perspectives. At times, those, those are healthy. I recently attended a, a city council where we had a city, city councilman wanting to put all of our homeless people in prison, or in jails. That proposal did not go through, thank goodness, but I consider that an extreme on the other end. I agree that whenever we, I will never walk away from a vote. I might write a dissenting opinion or post a, an editorial on my decision-making, but we are elected officials and we are not to walk away from our constituents and the people we represent.
So we have both ends in our spectrum for city council, but I believe that there's ways in which we work together and not just bring, set outside the politic, but doing what's right for our community and our citizens is most important, because at the end of the day, we're representing you guys. We're not representing politics or anything. We're here to take care of your streets, your sidewalk, your quality of life, your parks, benefiting park and ride areas to increase accessibility and then also offer our citizens the ability to, to ride there.
I'm a huge supporter for public transportation, and as many, as far-reaching and as many corners of our ward as we can get is what we need to be looking at. And our, our senior wellness center is about to open, and having a bus route over to the YMCA, and we have a child that will rely heavily, and neighbors that rely heavily on our, our buses, and we are lacking those desperately in Ward Five. And I plan on learning a whole lot about this meeting I invited you all to, you'll see me there. And I have a lot to learn, and I know you know a whole lot because you've served on that, and thank you for your service, but I am a huge supporter of it.
As an employee of Tyler Media, I have a really unique perspective on this, because we maintain all the bus stops, all the shelters, all the benches, we sell the advertising on that, have a partnership with the city where we share the revenue. Every one of those shelters costs about thirteen thousand dollars to put in. And that is just the shelter part of it, that doesn't pour the pad, that doesn't make the place ready for the shelter. And so the five hundred or so shelters that are going to happen in MAPS four is going to cost a whole lot of money. I think it's like, I don't even know exactly, I don't have the number off the top of my head. The problem with it is, to be real inclusive, there's eight new shelters on South Walker between Forty-Fourth and Fifty-Ninth with a ridership of about three a week per shelter. And so what Toon said is a whole lot better idea than expanding the route as to where you have a park and ride, or, and the, the bus does have a service that comes and actually picks you up where you're at. So you're not, you don't have to make it to a bus stop to ride a bus, but if the city were to expand service all the way down to Indian Hills Road, there'd be nobody riding buses. I mean, there might be, but it would be like South Walker with five people a week riding the bus.
All right.
Well, people don't know about the routes being available, and if that was offered, if it was offered in further south, we could actually do a good job of letting the public know and incentivizing them to, you know, like the first month, you ride for free. That way they get used to it, they see how it works, they see how, where it takes them to the places of shopping, the places of worship, things like that, they can get used to the, the schedule, morning through evening, and then as they're able to access that more and, and feel that more, then you're going to see more people come to them. But if the routes are out there, right now, I couldn't tell you exactly what, what bus line goes to what location at what time, unless I'm driving and they happen to be there in front of me.
All right.
Can I add to that real fast?
Yes.
So I, I actually had the ability to ride the bus recently, and it's just horrible. Our bus routes, because of six-hundred-and-twenty-one square miles, it took me from my office to get get to my house, and then because of the bus on May, it only puts me at I-240, I had to walk two and a half miles to my house. And so that's, that's the, that's the, that's the thing, is like, I know that there's not enough people riding it, the ridership is down, but because of the accessibility of it is not, is low. I feel like it would increase accessibility if we were to expand some of these options, but again, limitations on funding, so there, there are some ways where we can actually look at that, and Embark is doing a great job, Tyler Media with their agreements with the bus shelter and maintenance. We wouldn't be able to afford maintenance costs on our bus shelters if it's not for Tyler Media, so thank you, thank you.
All right. This question, "The streets in my neighborhood are pitifully maintained. Is there hope for city funds to repair my streets?" I don't know what neighborhood this is, they didn't put down an address or neighborhood on it. Is that something that the city works on, his neighborhood streets?
Well, currently, when the city is looking at resurfacing streets, unfortunately, they, they look at traffic flow and they look at growth factors. Right now, Canadian County portion of Oklahoma City is the fastest-growing area in the central part of Oklahoma, and so unfortunately, that's, that's how they look at, they look at the numbers of people driving in that area. But I can tell you, I pay my property taxes and sales taxes like everybody else, and in my...